This week. Okay, we'll call this meeting. And reconvene our, and open our open session. So I need a motion to do that. Thank you, Angie, second, Renee. So the motion on the floor is to reconvene open session. All in favor of reconvening? Very good. Okay, I want to welcome everyone here this evening. We appreciate your attendance. And if you would join me by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start off with some of our special recognitions. And the junior high is first on the list.
A fellow right up here about our junior high cross-country team is going to play coach Gasmim. He also works in our technology department. Junior high cross-country, you had a great year this year. The boys team had an impressive season, winning seven of eight games, and were conference champions. Josh Allison set a course record for the second straight year in the junior middle school race. The girls team had a great season as well, but barely getting edged out for first for most of their races. They gave it their all this season, and during conference, Anna Crosby and Lauren Nichols placed first and second. These kids had the determination to push each other every single day, and they put it on display each race. With this being my first season coaching cross-country, I couldn't be more proud of them. It was a pleasure to help these kids achieve their goals alongside Coach Colin, and I'm looking forward to next season. We also have a special insert. We just got our first quarter grades back, so we always like to report how each team did during their season of the competition. So the junior high has proudly announced the GPA for each of our fall sports teams, along with a list of student athletes who achieved a 4.0 during their season. Cheerleading and pomms will be recognized at the winter season, along with wrestling and basketball. Thank you to all the students, coaches, and parents who worked so hard, both in and out of the classroom. Our eighth grade football team had a 3.0 GPA, and Austin Romaine achieved a 4.0 this year. Our seventh grade football team also had a 3.0, but had multiple 4.0 students, Peyton Brown, A.J. Heisel, Dalton Ross, and Chase Saharsky. Is that my coach, Chase Saharsky? Had 4.0. Volleyball, eighth grade team had a 3.6 GPA with Ben Abrock, Dylan Day, Riley Cruz, achieving a 4.0. And our seventh grade volleyball averaged a 3.5 GPA. Our boys' cross-country team had a 3.5 GPA with Jonah Allison, Josh Allison, Alex Lee, Holland Schneider, and Richard Whitehead earning a 4.0. And the highest GPA of all was our girls' cross-country team had a 3.7 GPA with Anna Crosby and Sophia Harrell, earning a perfect 4.0.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. We have some info, some special recognitions for the high school, and Molly's going to present that for us this evening.
So first, we have JAG. On Wednesday, October 3rd, 45 high school JAG students were inducted into the Jobs for America's Graduates Career Association. Also inducted were the 2018, 2019 officers, President Caleb Brooks, Vice Presidents Sarah Wilson, Taylor Wright, Amelia Moser, and Secretary Sarah Jackson. The following students qualified to represent the HHS JAG program at the National Student Leadership Academy in Washington, DC, November 15th through the 18th. Caleb Brooks, Sarah Wilson, Sarah Jackson, Keith Schubach. Keith was selected to attend the Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Governor's Mansion on November 30th. Keith and Mr. Nantle will travel by charter bus with other JAG students and specialists from the south-central area who are qualified to attend. Caleb Brooks, Mr. Nantle, and Dr. Freeman have also been asked to attend the Missouri JAG Board Meeting at the Governor's Mansion in Jefferson City, Missouri, on October 23rd, and speak about the benefits the program brings to our students and our school. And also, I'm hoping everybody heard about this, but our high school softball team made it to the top four in state, so they're in Springfield, and they're participating in that tournament right now, which is exciting.
Thank you, Molly. Ten in the morning. They play at 10 o'clock in the morning, is that what we're? They play at 10:00 in the morning, and if they win that one, then they play on Saturday. If they don't win, then they play for third or fourth place in the afternoon on Friday. So we're looking for a win tomorrow. So they can move on to the next level. I don't. Oak Grove. Okay. We also had a very nice letter from some retirees about the brunch that was sponsored over homecoming. Mrs. Petrie and I attended, but we had Mr. Renaire and several of his staff and students and other personnel that helped to put this on. We were very appreciative of the turnout, and it was a really good time. It was very nice. The retirees were super pleased and excited and are looking forward to next year. They had nothing but good things to say about the brunch. So we thank Mr. Renaire for putting that together. That was an awesome event. All righty, we'll move on then. That takes us to our consent agenda. Oh, did we have any visitor signed after the decision? Okay, sorry. So there are no visitors, so we'll move on then to the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda. Hopefully, you had a chance to go through them. So let's make a motion first to approve it, and then we'll discuss the issues that we might have.
I need to accept consent agenda's presentation.
Okay.
I wasn't in the October 10 meeting. That's on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Can we put that somewhere?
We can pull the work session?
That's on here, right?
Well, those are minutes. How about we pull some of those minutes then? Because that's what we all had issues with.
I know. It seemed like.
I'd like to pull September 25th and September 25th tax hearing. You pulled those.
Well, and the work session minutes?
I was here for the 10th.
Well, that's what others were not. So we'll just pull the minutes. That gets all of them for now. But the rest of the items on the consent agenda. Are we good with that? Items B through I. So we have.
I amend it.
Okay, we need a second then?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on items B through I?
I know this is the first green on the policies, and I have not been able to read through them all yet, but a question, there was GDC listed on the side, but then when I opened it, it was empty, and it's not listed on the executive session here. So is that?
And there was one that we didn't get in the meeting, isn't that correct?
So, okay, so that really, it wasn't that I was missing in, out of my packet then?
When we attended that meeting, unless that was one that was added later? What were the letters again?
GDC. Okay, because it was listed on the side. And just kind of my first few, it seemed like most of these were related to law changes. Is that right? There's not any of them?
On the policies?
Yes, that we ought to pay real particular attention to.
Any other thoughts about items B through I? Okay, so, motion on the floor stands to approve items B through I on the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, very good. So we'll go back and do the individual minutes then. We have the meeting and the tax hearing of September 25th.
I need to approve the tax minutes in the regular session of September 25th, as presented.
Okay. Thank you. All in, or any discussion on those? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same sign? And abstentions? Okay?
I need to approve the September 28th special tax leaving and special meeting.
And the hearing?
And the hearing.
Okay. So we have the September 28th tax hearing and meeting. I have a first by Ms. Petrie, a second. Any discussion on those? Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes? All right, very good. And it gets to the minutes for the work session of October 10th. Need a motion for that?
I need to approve the minutes of September, October 10th.
Thank you, Renee. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes for the October 10th work session? Opposed? Abstention. Okay, thank you very much. And then there should be also that hearing on October 18th. We need to approve those minutes as well.
Did you do that?
We did have a second session. Okay, so we don't need to do them? Okay. All right, so that completes the consent agenda, I believe. Is that correct? All right, so let's move on then to unfinished business. No, we can't do that yet, we're doing reports. I jumped the gun. Okay, so Director Best, Facilities and Grounds Report.
Jennifer, did you notice what I was doing there? I was trouble.
I was good with it, real good. Good as you want. This past month and everything was basically just kind of focused on a lot of the construction going on, as you'll see here shortly, where I'm showing you a little short video or pictures of what they've been doing and what, how far they've gotten. Again, we're still due to be finished up by end of December, as y'all know, so we've got a really tight schedule to complete, or they do, but we are trying to track them, making sure they're there, so it's been a big focus right now. We have done some of the punch lists, which is the first part, first punch list. There'll be another one as we complete it and everything, but the first part of the punch list has been done in the areas that they did during the summer months. And what that did is, what we'll finish up with that is, we go back to contractor, say this has to be done. So that's in the works at this time on all three buildings. So we'll keep you posted, we'll give you copies of that information as we get that all recapped and so forth, as you will see it. Some of the things we have been looking at and working on, we've worked with our roofing corporation, which is Trimco. They have all our warranties, as you might know, on our roofs. We've had some issues at the junior high, the primary in the years past, and I quote "years," as we keep working on, and we try to find, and we find one, get another one, right? So anyway, Trimco came out about a month and a half ago, surveyed all the roof stores again, where was having problems. They were here this past week and did the junior high. Everything went well, based on the information they know of and their knowledge, and what they did to help us out. We think junior high might be free in most places, at least some of the old ones. Thank you, hopefully. Tomorrow, we're going to try it for the primary. So the Trimco's coming back tomorrow now to do that, but that's going to be a little different. We're actually going to resurface about 1,500 square foot of B wing, because that's where most of our problems are with this B wing. Why that roof has potentially always been a problem, nobody seems to know, but we're going to cover it, basically, again, is what we're doing in the B wing, so that should cover it for sure. So we're going to try it. They'll also be reviewing the intermediate roof. We've got a couple of issues over here at our intermediate sections. So right there on campus tomorrow, they'll be surveying that to see what we need to do with that one, because as we all know, roofs are most, are pretty well, one of the biggest important things we need in our building. So we do basically survey these roofs quite often to make sure that A, the warranty's in place, and B, that they're being maintained, because if we don't have them, there's a lot of assets down below, and that's going to be damaged, and we definitely don't want that. So we are working on that to try to keep up with that. One other thing that we are working on, the primary, I put it on the report, just so you're aware of, in case some people have been running around hearing it. We are looking at some of the issues we're having with, was brought up by administration. They've got a couple safety concerns at the primary with these playgrounds with kids running, so we have and are looking at that, so we can make sure that our students and our public are safe and they're comfortable when they're letting those kids, our kids there. So we are working on that, we're addressing it. Administration's helping out a lot with the teachers and everything, so we'll keep you posted what we as a school district might need to do as an action. But in the meantime, the teachers have done a fantastic job helping us and maintaining the students, but that is a concern on safety factor there, so might be something we'll look at, so we'll keep you posted. Work order is kind of quiet this past month, 184, so that's not too bad. Yeah, actually took a lot more time last month, and thanks to Transportation and their team, they had to deal with us for months, not having bays, some of their bays that they needed for working the buses and so forth, but kind of a slow turnout. We had about seven vendors for the whole day, which is real little. And they showed that when Debbie and them did the recap, they showed they did about $528. So that doesn't count, you know, some of the other expenses you have to look at, that's still coming out of that, unfortunately, but as y'all know, we don't really go after making money at it. We look at it from the point of view that we need to make sure we're getting rid of the assets that we have in the district properly by policy too. So that's something that we have to look at, but it helps some people out, hopefully, you know. I wanted to point out one other thing too, I don't have it on here, but I just wanted to do a shout out to Mr. Renaire real quick too. He's getting ready, his students are getting ready to do their national wide city cleanup, annual, I guess, second annual, I guess, now, maybe? Third? We just put signs out for them, pick up trash, we don't know how many are. But thanks to Mr. Renaire and the students that he has, they do a fantastic job with the community service part of it. As we all know, we all try to be part of the community, as much as five of them, I think, got some outstanding jobs, so I wanted to give a shout out to him as well. So, good job, Joe. And that, we're going to show you the video, if you guys are ready, just show you a few pictures of the things you're going to see. I don't know if we got the music, I'm sorry, I didn't get that, but I can talk if it did. You know, it's kidding.
I can sing. You don't want me singing.
I was just going to say, Beth.
That's what it looked like before, so, you know, this is kind of some of the steps you go through to get there, of course. The skill's probably the hardest thing to put in and make sure it's in the right place. There's a lot of tests that go in there that you have to have, and make sure it's the right structure and the right support. So, really kind of a slow process, but once it gets there, that's what it looks like today. This is the bathroom Mr. Allison has problems with. I want to remind you what the old bleachers look like, and what they look like. So, these are some of the classrooms that were still built and working on now, they've got a little farther now, of course, so, those will be ready here by end of December for Mr. Allison. There's elementary. Now, the elementary office is actually, we'll probably be moving into them in a couple weeks. They are basically done. We've got a few little fine tuning to do, but we've finally got all the hardware in, we've got to get it installed that goes to the secure doors in the vest wheel, and that's supposed to be in place according to Matt next week, so we'll probably move in for it soon. They'll be happy. And there are letters that'll be on, not on this side of the building and everything, but on the front side, as we're walking up toward the elementary will be put on place, probably in a couple of weeks, so you'll see, actually it'll say "Elementary," if you want to know where we're at now. So, that's where we're at on that. Again, I think we've done getting there, we should hit our targets. There'll be a few things that they're going to have to finish up, probably between mid-January to February, but they will finish it up. Talked to the electrician over at the primary there, Dave Joe, and he said that it's going to be rough for them, but they calculate they're about four weeks behind, so I thought they need to catch up a little faster, so. He said he would, so, we'll see. So that's where we're at. So, yes, sir.
Excuse me, one other item, it's more like kind of the good news, is Ray received an email that he shared with me, he shared with the admin team, from the superintendent of Rockwell Construction, who's still here, Matt Pig, that the elementary hosted a lunch for the construction workers, and the students wrote out cards, thank you cards, and he emailed late in the evening, just very appreciative, the guys that were working there, I mean, it was pretty neat, and just, they said, we're, we're always different than a lot of the schools that we go with that, and just, that's a testament to the value to the elementary and Miss Carol and his staff.
Any questions or anything from me I need to help with? Please, real quick. Nope? Have a good Halloween? Don't come up my house.
All right, we'll move on to the technology report with Grandma.
During the past month, we've completed 209 headquarters. Construction Air Johnson's been working hard to make sure we're staying on task with what we need to get completed, and then following up on all that for us. Chromebooks and iPads, we've had to do a lot of repairs recently on those, and it's from keyboards to cracked screens to the actual keyboard itself going bad, the cameras, so it's, the age of them is starting to take its toll on some of them, I'm just throwing that out there, so down the road when we ask for more Chromebooks, you understand that we haven't been smart. And Moses and Core Data, Karen Freiner has completed the Moses Core Data cycle, and it was on time, she did a great job on that. There's five separate different data files that she has to join together and make sure that all that data is accurate, and it takes a lot of work, and she does a really good job on that. Regarding training, Ethan did a training class for the intermediate staff on Smart Boards. Erin and I attended a conference on data privacy, and Mark attended a frontline Apple Track best practices forum. Any questions?
Sounds like you've been missing. Thank you. All righty. I lost my phone. There we go. Financial report is usually given by Miss Ginge, but she is on her way to Springfield because her daughter is on the softball team, and so that was a good thing for her to get to go. But you were given the same information that she would send us, and I don't know, are you discussing anything in her place?
Well, a few things, the audit, you know, she said the audit went well, and that document will be presented at the next meeting there in November.
About the audit?
About the audit, the final document. It's anticipated in November. And Proposition C, which we'll talk about this evening, some information there. And then the facilities authority met on October 15th at the central office and completed the necessary steps for the dissolution of the facilities authority, which was put together due to the highway involved in that land contract. So they have a meeting and completed that.
Any other questions about the finances? Okay. So we'll move on then to the unfinished business section, where we will be pulling from the table the SRO contract. So, we tabled it back in August, but we now have that contract signed, and all the attorneys have agreed from both sides, I guess. So is there, do we have to approve this? Okay. So, we need a motion then from one of us to approve this contract. Jefferson County Sheriff's SRO officers. Okay? Thank you. Any discussion? You know, we talked about it a little bit before.
One thing I do want to point out is if you look on the billing, 2018 months, August through December, we have changed from a monthly rate to a daily rate. That is the first time that that's been offered to school districts. The background to that was, in some districts, not Hillsborough as much, is some of the SROs were on SWAT, so they were being called out a significant amount of time, some, you know, could be three days in a week, depending on what was occurring, and that became, superintendents discussed that at the superintendent meeting with Sheriff Marshak, and they implemented a daily, so if they're gone, the district's not paying for something that is not there. The increase in January is a result of the proposition that was passed, and the increase in sheriff salaries, or definitely.
Okay, any other thoughts or concerns? Questions? All right, all in favor of approving the SRO contract for Jefferson County? Or with Jefferson County? Thank you. All right, so that finishes the old business, and we'll move on to new business. We have an MOU with Jefferson Franklin, Franklin? Jefferson Franklin County Community Action Head Start. I read that. Okay, sorry, my computer jumped ahead. I was on the next one. Letter C. Okay, so we'll go to, we'll go to A, that's where we usually start. And that has to do with approving students for early graduation. We have from the high school, letter A, I guess, is our first one, and then we'll look at.
Typically, these are put on one executive summary, but Dr. Freeman wanted to show you that these students are coming from basically three different programs, not just from the traditional high school building.
And you said that was a total of about?
Sixty, sixty total here. Last year, there was fifty-one.
Okay.
Do you know how much probably that costs us?
I don't know, I don't know how much it costs. I can't tell you. Well, you know, they're reading the letters, some go to college.
Yes.
Some go to military, some have children to go to work. If they're finished with their credits by December, and we keep them here, they're not coming to school. I mean, we're going to lose their attendance, just anyway.
Well, and I, as I was reading the letters, just in my short four and a half years here, I thought it was interesting, there were a lot more that were continuing on in their education early versus being a hardship on the family or that kind of thing, it just seemed to, you know, I've seen that change, which was kind of interesting.
Well, and we've come to a point too, we offer so many, we offered those two credits at the junior high level, so you're going into high school with two credits. Plus, we have the southern school where they can take keyboarding, and a lot, a lot of our kids will take advantage of getting some of those credits out of the way, so their students can open up during their regular school year, so it provides us opportunities.
Do the majority of these kids come back and actually go through the ceremony? Do you know?
Yeah, I've never.
I was just curious.
I don't have specific data on that, but, you know, just from, from me, there, most of them come back with the junior high.
Through that community. And prom?
Yes. Those are big concerns.
Okay. So I need a motion then to approve the early graduate applications, provided that all coursework is completed by the end of the semester.
I move...
Thank you, John. Second? Was that that? And this is for the high school only. So any other thoughts or questions? All in favor of approving this list? All right. Very good. Motion carries. So then we'll move on to the early graduates from the alternative school that semester.
I need to accept the early graduates from alternative school.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Credit.
Thank you, Jane. Any other thoughts before we vote?
I just had a question on the options plus students. I wondered what that was or how, how that was different from the alternative student.
It's a program that they're in school for three hours a day. And they have to pass, let's see if I can remember this, Jennifer Personal Finance, Civics, and Health. And Ms. Provinzano prepares them to take the HIC test, which was, used to be the GED test. And they have to work, so they attend school for three hours a day and then they have to have so many work hours to complete their program.
They have seventeen.
I'm sorry?
They have only seventeen.
Seventeen and it's a program designed for students who are significantly behind.
All right. Any other thoughts? Okay. So all in favor of approving the alternative school students to graduate early? Thank you. Okay. This one looks familiar. All right. So this is an MOU from Jefferson Franklin Community Action Head Start. And this is something that we do every year that we approve. So I need a motion then to approve the MOU with Jefferson Franklin Community Action Head Start as presented.
I need a second.
Thank you, Renee, and then back. Are there any questions about this?
No.
Everybody okay with this? Okay, it's pretty standard. All right. All in favor of approving this MOU? All right. That's good. The next item gets us... To the Proposition C resolution and the ballot language. So as you know, it was discovered that our waiver came to a sunset. So we discussed at the last, what was it, the 28th, September 28th, we discussed putting this on the ballot and bringing it before the voters to approve another waiver for Proposition. So the ballot is listed for you, I believe, yes? The language for that ballot, this is how it will look.
I just have a question. It doesn't say Hillsborough, R3. It just says, you know, school district, R3, Jefferson County. Is that what it normally says on our ballots? Does it really? It doesn't, the Hill's power may not fully... Interesting, yes.
I just wanted to say I, I feel more comfortable about this factoring in why the sunset clause was on this day in the first place. I, I've been, I've been trying to look into it. I haven't been getting very far yet, but I'd just like more time to look into this to see why there was a sunset clause. You know, if there was some promise that was made back then, I'd like to know what that was. You know, I don't know why there was a sunset clause. You know, it could have been for other reasons, like, you know, twenty years would have been due or whatever, but I just want to know in the specifics of it.
So how would you find that?
Well, you know, if the leader had an article on it, that would be, they usually cover those sorts of things, like if it's promoted, you know, they quote the superintendent at the time saying, hey, this is what, you know, why we're doing this and why we're doing it this way a lot of times. So I, I just, I prefer to table this for next month. That's my...
What would that do to the...
We have to have the information accepted to the...
Tempur.
January.
So we're not in a hurry?
No, I mean, that's why we're, January is our deadline to put it on April ballot.
But, you know, if there was information, if we had information like a flyer here or something to, you know, anything, I just want to do the due diligence on this to see if I can find, if I can't, I can't, but, you know, I, I prefer to table this.
The other question I had was the $9,000. That's not in addition to the normal, so that's just the cost of the election that we run anyway.
Now, if we put additional things on there, we're filled a little more? Is that how it works? But it won't be significant. It's just, it's divided among...
I knew that. I was just terrified.
Because we'll have school board election at that time too.
Well, what are your thoughts as to John's proposal?
I can make a motion if you want to.
Well, let's discuss it, see what people think.
Is it going to make a difference in whether it's expired or not though? It's not gonna make a difference in my vote, let's put it that way.
It'll make a difference in mine. I just want to know the reason there, because if it's some compelling reason, like a promise was made, hey, this is temporary, I feel obligated, honored that regardless of, you know, if it was twenty years ago. If it was just, hey, we're gonna review this in twenty years, that's different. I want to know.
Either way, I gotta put the kids first and this, that, that money is, affects our kids drastically.
Yes.
Promise is a promise.
It was temporary, it was twenty years.
Right is right.
And so now we're going back and, you know, asking.
It's not that we're just throwing a promise out the window. We're just re-asking the public if this is what they would do. I mean, if you read the ballot language, it's pretty clear. It's not taking a promise...
Actually, ballot language, because it's such a convoluted situation, it's not that clear.
I think it's clear to me. It's clear. It's asking yes or no. Do you want to eliminate the sales tax reduction and operating levy for school purposes? Proposition C, roll back.
Anybody who reads that isn't gonna know what a sales tax reduction, the operating levy means.
That is a responsibility of a voter to educate themselves.
Sure. I'm, I'm just saying that I want to know what, what this is all about in terms of twenty years ago. Why was there a sunset clause? I don't know. I just want to know why. I want all that information before I make my vote. So it, that's...
But the people are gonna make that decision.
Right. I mean, if, if they want to know, they will have the opportunity to find that out.
But, but, well, I need to ask them. Sure, but, you know, I'm putting my name to approving this, so I, I want to... I can't. So, I mean, if I don't have a second, but I moved the table.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to table creating the ballot language for this evening until further information is gathered. Do we have a second? Okay. So the motion doesn't have a second, so I'm, sorry, we'll move on then, I guess. John, is there something you'd like to talk to us about any of this or just...
It is, this executive summary is just showing the, is the ballot language put forth by Gilmore and Bell that will be on the ballot and is asking permission of the board to approve us asking the voters in April whether they want to...
And we will be educating the public, helping to educate them on this...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This proposition on this issue.
Okay. I move to accept the ballot language for the April vote.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay. Do we have a second? Thank you, Jane. Any other thoughts on that? Okay. So the motion is to accept the proposal as presented for the ballot? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Moving on. We had some change orders. Action number five. The title, all right. All right. So it's not as, yes, it's not as big as it had been. That's correct. We're winding down. Okay. So I'd like to hear a motion to approve the change, to approve of the change orders as presented.
I made a motion to approve the change orders as presented.
Second? Any discussion or questions about any of these change orders? Anybody okay? Okay. All in favor of approving these change orders? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to the bus grant.
Good job.
Thank you.
Really. It was so awesome that you...
And we were number five in the lottery pool. That was pretty cool.
Yeah, it was.
That was pretty awesome.
How many hours did it take you to do this, the application?
It didn't take that long. I'd maybe total six hours, but that was just trying to figure out where to get the information from on the bus.
They did this work. Thanks. Awesome.
I move to accept the grant for the bus purchase as presented.
Thank you very much.
Second?
All right. So we are approving, allocating the funds that we need to go toward the purchase of three new buses. Okay? Any discussion other than what we just have?
It's pretty awesome.
Just to bring up for discussion is, we didn't budget for these, this year's budget, but they have to be purchased by June 30th. And so we had long discussions in light of the Proposition C and we have never due funding this year, is trying to decide do we move forward? Because they needed, they need to know whether we're gonna accept it for schools that will... And our recommendation is that at the end of the day, we need buses. We need to move forward and it's, you know, basically we're gonna not quite get a bus free, but getting that amount of money, it's still gonna be $180,000.
Yeah.
You know, but it's still gonna be that amount of money. There are things that we can look into when we talk about the finances and reserves, et cetera. As Ms. Ginge, just getting out there to look at our options as, there's lease purchase, if they're, just looking at the options as, hey, there's two, those were all the different things that we looked at as far as $180,000 in the budget that, you know, if it was an issue with moving on that is even in the short term, depending on what happens in April, and just paying it off.
And Kelly recommends this as well.
Oh, yeah, well, we went before she had.
Right.
And she thinks, we all think of that, yes, it's a big expenditure, but we need to catch up and we can't give back free money to our taxpayers.
Well, that's, I mean, that's really...
Five, two, get three quarters free.
Okay. Any other thoughts? All right. So we have a motion to approve allocating the funds needed to purchase these three new buses. So all in favor? Very good. Letter G gets us to the early separation incentive program. Now, this is the second time we've offered this, right?
Yes. Is, since our last meeting is I sent out a survey to our staff asking if they were, will be accepting, we're fairly confident, we're interested and need to visit in it, but needed to research more information. Those individuals are more like, it's my 25th year, I'm on the 25 now. I've visited with several individuals and just kind of working through some items. So for certifies in determining the, whether we should as a district move forward, I looked at the responses and putting before you the ones that were fairly confident they will accept the ESIP. There was a couple others that put it on there, but they weren't gonna qualify. You know, so I followed up and said, hey, you can't retire or you can't leave based on the qualifications written there because it's a separation thing. So you'll see the individuals kind of that were interested in looking at determining, all right, what's the financial of that? Okay. Is, you'll see on, I believe it's the next page if you scroll down, the individuals we have one, six certified, and then I believe the six classified individuals. And after this has actually been another person that's put in and said they were interested. In order to determine whether we should move forward with this, it's important to look at, what is their annual rate of pay? I did not include the PSRS amount, you know, the fourteen and a half percent of the higher amount versus the other. This is strictly salary versus a salary. So at the top, that's a certified teacher that's making $67,000. For the purpose of doing the comparison was we're gonna replace everyone, but we were gonna hire back a person with five years' experience and a master's degree.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, that's just to give, you know, rather than saying, hey, we're gonna hire all a first year and a bachelor's because that's gonna show bigger savings. It's let's put a five years and a master's and... So you see, that's the second column where that individual's salary based on this year's salary schedule would be forty-two, $42,144. Well, the next column over is adding in the $12,500 that we would be paying to the retiree or the individual that's leaving the district in that first year. Okay? So adding that to the replacement wage results in a salary of, or total expense of $54,000. So you see the projected savings for that particular individual is $12,000. The big savings that you'll see here in most situations is the certified staff really drive the savings. The classified staff, there isn't significant savings. It's more dependent upon position. One of the reasons for that is, you'll see the bottom two classified staff, those are paraprofessionals. When you're, $12,000 is pretty close to the yearly wage that they will make. Last year when, or the previous time when we did this, we spread it out over two years, it was basically a $6,000 difference. A paro works approximately $1,000 an hour, so in order for it to be a wash, literally it was a thousand hour, you'd have to have six dollar an hour difference in their salary. So going through all of that, looking at if these, the assumptions are, these individuals retire or separate from the district and we replace every position and we replace every position hiring somebody for five years and a master's degree, the estimated net savings is $32,000. Now, the last time when we did this, we did it over two years. All right? So, it was $6,000, one year and $6,000 in that. $32,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but if you look at like the last time we did it, we're spending, there's twelve, twelve people leaving, times $12,000 is $144,000 and change. And we're doing all of that in year one. So the year two savings is $32,000 plus that $140, cause we're doing it upfront. And so, um, you can see kind of the difference in the annual rate of, uh, pay, replacement wage, and then adding in those funds that we'd be paying to the individuals separating from the district.
So, so over two years, you're saving over $200,000?
Depending on, you know, the, uh, who you hire, et cetera, but yes. If you're comparing, if we compared it to the last time that we did it, cause the last time that, um, we did the retirement incentive, it was approximately $158,000 in year one, $156 in year two. Is we're not capturing that in year one, we're capturing most of it in year two. So, and there may be additional savings based on if there wasn't, depending on how different things were structured, or potentially not replacing someone, but our intent was, is to replace, it's not, is I'll be clear, to not replace teachers, et cetera. There may be, we plan on, would be a plan to replace all the teaching staff, et cetera, and look at those items.
Why did you choose to change up, and instead of two years, do it on the first year?
Okay. That was a recommendation on the attorney when we, when we sent, it was looking at it, in it, because it becomes tax implications for the individual's. When you're doing it over two years, one would think that you're only adding $6,000 to your salary. If you're receiving that as a condition of like entering into a contract, according to RS, it is, that becomes $12,000 in year one, even though you're not getting the income until year two. And so it becomes. That being for, for the individual that is leaving the district. Secondly, it just becomes cleaner, um, for long-term planning, you know, it's for the individual. I think it's also, while it reduces our savings in year one, you're giving all the money to the individual that's leaving the district right upfront. That has provided the potential for opportunities for them to, um, buy years and take advantage of potentially the rule of eighty-six, partial lump sum, and been able to work with some staff members to be like, hey, if you do this around, and, or they use that $12,000, you know, they have to buy their years kind of on the front end. But if they have a short period of time, um, to kind of, they're in a position to do that, to buy the years, that extra year that will bump them up to the rule of eighty-six, some employees can literally put that $12,000, if they have money in their sick leave balance, we pay that off. It takes them, they would actually have to pay out of pocket, their net, that, their wallet has to go down. Reduces that, and it's pushing them in to, I don't want to use the word windfall, but it allows them to take advantage of a partial lump sum, et cetera. So I've been able to work with staff members on that. That's been very fun to have, uh, visiting with some staff members who didn't know that they could retire and all of a sudden.
The light bulb goes off. It's exciting.
The light bulb goes off and, uh, and you know what, everyone on the list is deserving. It's exciting. I'm, I'm glad that our district offered it to our classified staff. That's not always the case. I'll tell you that on that list, we have, um, some of our staff have worked in classified positions and paras, et cetera. Thirty years, mid-twenty-five years. And this is a great way for the district to say thank you, but also it presents, um, we're taking care of all of our employees. You know? So, wish we could do more, but the recommendation is that we move forward, cause I think it's beneficial for the district and. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the early separation incentive plan. Any question? All in favor? All righty. Very good. That gets us to our last item of the evening, which has to do with construction of the elementary. So, I'm able to let you talk about that, since you know more about it.
All right. There will not be any action taken tonight. This is more informational, is, as you are aware, we, uh, did not finish that top area of the new classroom division. Right now, it's a very large, uh, open space. And we're, as we're kind of wrapping up our construction, um, projects and looking at our contingency fund and like, hey, what can we do with those bond proceeds? Is, there's a lot of needs in the district, but it's evaluating, we're kind of looking at, what are the things, what can we get done for $500,000? Or $400,000, et cetera? Is, you know, when you look at the high school, and we need to address some of the needs over there as far as our entrance, et cetera. The issue is, $500,000 probably isn't going to do it, be able for us, doesn't allow us to do it right. And ultimately, if we're not able to do it right, is, we probably shouldn't start that potentially. And looking at the other projects. So, kind of coming back to that, we've, we have a changing population in our school. Is, um, our spec population has risen, um, not a huge number of students, it really hasn't. And we've kind of trickled up, but the needs of the students have escalated, which is a result in staffing and those type of, uh, situations. And with a high number of our behavior students, a growing number, I wouldn't say a high number, a growing number. And with historically, we've lost the co-op in Jefferson County, uh, when that dissipated several years ago, is we house our special education and try to address all of their needs as we can. And when we're not able to meet those needs, then we, uh, look for, uh, other avenues outside of the district. So, one of the things that we've discussed in the past is how to address some of our changing needs, specifically like with, uh, behaviors, uh, students with autism, and having, um, facilities and, and equipment that is providing the best educational environment for those students and all of our students, uh, here at Hillsborough. And so that we can best meet the needs of our students. And so we started looking at, hey, what is that space over there? You know, what, could we use that? And just, what this drawing is, is, um, I visited with the architect and said, what would it cost? Do you think that to finish that space, the walls in that space, everything is done, what would it cost to put walls up and to build a special education center or wing where we're able to do things, do it the right way, with a sensory room that is designed, um, done first class the way that it should be, as opposed to trying to make to you, you know, a classroom that was designed as a regular education classroom? That's, doesn't have all the equipment, et cetera? He said, I think that we could probably come in under that number. I said, well, don't, do it, will you come down and visit with our staff, um, and we'll talk about it? And so we, he came down and, um, laid some paper over that space, and we toured that space. And he has, uh, presented this, and there was an option B, which has a, a larger sensory room, but you'd have to walk through the, uh, sensory room to get to an admin office. It has a recovery room, a white room, which, uh, is a sensory type, uh, room. There's actually, you know, we sent this out to the principals, where you see the doors walking into the right-hand side, is actually the doors would be moved. He said a closet would be nice there. And then build a, a shared teacher office with windows that could be used for observation. And it's a space that is designed specifically, um, for the, those students and those needs and putting, uh, the things in place for that. He has not gotten back to me, he was gonna touch base, kind of the thought process was this. Is, this would obviously have to come before the Board of Education, let's talk about it. Is this something, this is a need that we have in our district, that is now the time to address it. And try to develop a K-6 program of that nature, which, this is the space. The program isn't been designed, uh, Matt would work with that. We would need to look at some of the, the staffing. You know, we're not in a position to add a bunch of staffing. How would that look? We don't know that, the first kind of question was, we even build it? You know? So, this is more of putting it out there to say, hey, if this is under that, that price, and we can do it and do it right. Not a Band-Aid, not something that we're like, oh, we would, to do it right. Putting the things in there so that potentially there's cost savings for not having, um, our students go to another school, because we're not able to accommodate their needs. So that they can still stay at Hillsborough with their peers. Potentially, developing a program where districts may send children to ours, just like as we're paying to send our students, there may be the opportunity to, a student in neighboring district, they don't, they're not able to meet those needs, we have an opening, and we take those students and those costs help offset ours. With obviously always focusing on our students, number one, to where they're staying here. The advantage is, um, to the elementary, as we kind of looked at it, is, it's in the middle between, um, a grade level K, K-6. One of the things that makes it difficult for us as a district to address some of those needs from building to building is our population in each building may not warrant a teacher. All right? In a K-6 building, there's five or six kids, but at the primary, there may be one or two. The elementary's got one, the intermediate's got three. Not enough to warrant three teachers, you know? And so, um, we sometimes struggle in addressing those needs. So, putting it there, at, at the elementary, the space is already built. You know, which is a major cost to start, we've talked about, there are different areas maybe around the district, and looking at that, but then you have the playgrounds already there. You know, we may need to, and would, probably build like an inclusive playground, obviously. And to make that so that as a mom or dad, when you walk in, you're like, this is where my child wants to be. There's nursing services, there's laundry, all of those different things are attached within that building, it's attached to our school. So just a thought on that, I wanted to bring you up to speed, get your input. Matt, if you have other thoughts that.
I mean, it's, and we've been discussing for quite some time, just because the needs have kind of increased. So how can we better meet it across the board? Program-wise, I've been discussing and kind of brainstorming a lot of options and a lot of tours of other facilities. So based on that information, and based on kind of the spacing and everything, and can we actually legitimately make it work? It's like you said, we don't want it to be any nonsense, we want to actually do it the right way. And based on this and all the information, yeah, based on the program and everything, is something that is there, we've got a need. So, kind of addressing that component.
How many districts in the county offer this kind of service?
Depending on the level of it, I guess I should say, um, it's a little bit different. Uh, there, there are a couple that do offer a behavior program. There's, you know, the autism component of it. But to actually look at more facility-wise, it's more of a private facility. Um, there's, there's one in the county that does more of the behavior side of it. And there's a lot of districts that have students there.
My question is, would this fill the needs of other districts? I mean, like, if there's a real need for something like that?
Yes. I mean, our ultimate goal, obviously, is to take care of our own students. However, if that need should arise, or that opportunity should arise, that, you know, we're contacted by another district of saying, hey, do you have the spacing or the opening for that? Then we can look into it further to see, is it something that we can actually make work? And if so, then we'll pursue that, that route. Which is one of those long-term objectives in the back of our mind, as, hey, if you develop it the right way, there are opportunities that you can do.
How many students can we serve with this size of a space? Is there a student capacity that we're looking at?
Not necessarily, uh, capacity in regards to size, you just gotta be careful of the severity and the level of the needs within that area, and that's what you gotta really look at. So, it's not necessarily always the spacing, it is the different, different levels of the students within that setting. So that can, that can drastically change from year to year. One year might be like eight, might be the max, or nine might be the max in that room. Uh, the following year, it might be six. Just, so that is a kind of a year-by-year and case-by-case. That's why we would look at it carefully on that end of it.
And to that end, I mean, this is, like, talk about typical like, um, process of, uh, starting something. It's really kind of, there's the brick and mortar before the programs really in place. It's kind of a unique situation, and that's where, and we've talked about, if the space doesn't work, then we don't. You know? We have some ideas.
But the space is useless right now.
Right.
So this would be making lemonade out of a lemon, that's.
Right.
It, it allows us to address a need. That was more, we think it, I want to, we think it may allow us to address a need, is let's look at all, all of the different things.
Cause we're using the money that's in our contingency, that's left from this building project. So it's not like we're pulling money out of our savings accounts or.
No, this is using, hey, that, when, it's bond money? And so, is this a project addressing, uh, our special education need, building that, addressing that need?
And that was what we planned to do all along, was when we came to the end of the building projects, what are we gonna do with what was left? And we had options or thoughts about what we would use it on. And I personally think this sounds like a great idea.
Don't we have some initial research from when Scott was proposing the Hawk School at the intermediate? As far as what a program like this would look like? Who would exactly be starting from scratch?
So, yeah, I mean, yeah. We've, we've, Matt and I talked, I know Mr. Seals, Matt, Miss Kinger as well, and they, they're gonna take it randomly from there. So, yeah, so we're gonna start from scratch. And this is that, we, I mean, we've been discussing for quite some time, the opportunity kind of hold itself now, so it's one of those things. But we've got a lot of research that we've been doing over the years with this.
But there really isn't anything we can do till, yeah, till we know.
No, it's, I think there's not enough information. I mean, for us to make an official recommendation as to, hey, we need, as a board, I would wanna know, all right, what's the cost of a city? What is, what is the program? What is, what would that look like? What is the, the staffing? You know, we can't. You know, we can't create a whole bunch more staffing needs, is how is, what are the different things, how would other buildings be impacted?
So, yeah, and safety too, if there are real high behavior needs, and like, what the policies would be written out, that if, how many, I mean, if there's violence, and can they get out of that building? It was, I don't know.
Well, but are you looking from us to say, yes, continue looking at it?
Yeah, basically, are we interested in exploring it, you know, or do I come say, hey, no, we're probably not.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
I mean, we have days where a hundred kids suffer because of one that's in the wrong spot.
It sounds like a great opportunity if we can work it out, but.
That is, that's our hope.
Yeah, it's as early stages get, so I appreciate your efforts in that, and it's so very promising. Okay, so that will conclude all the items on the agenda, which means we are looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourned the night's meeting, adjourning? Okay, very good. Thank you for attending, we appreciate you coming.